Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's April 18th, 2023 City Council meeting. I'd like to respectfully ask that everyone please silence all electronic devices. At this time, we'll call on Councilmember Kathy Hikes for the invocation.
Let's take a moment. Poets and theologians at this time of year suggest that we pray with our eyes open. Instead of logging on or browsing the web, we might go outside and watch what is happening during this time of rebirth that comes each year. A show like this costs us nothing but a few minutes on focus. Consider and be grateful for the role our city parks play in luring us into the natural world. Our focus must this evening, though, be on the agenda at hand, which keeps us inside. Let us bring our best selves to our endeavors, refreshed by the green outside, while making decisions that we hope will benefit our society and our world. We are very grateful for our city employees who wake each workday with a mission to help keep our city government running and efficient. We ask for this council wisdom and that we govern to the best of our ability. And we remember our citizens who suffer or grieve tonight, or who are hungry or homeless. Bring them healing and peace. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Our next item is a special recognition of Burlington Animal Services, our field services team. This time, we would like to recognize Tammy Pendley, our administrative and field services manager, Nick Tempesta, our animal services officer, and James Norris, animal services officer. Please come forward. How's everyone? So, our field services team, we have several points of reference that we really want to acknowledge their services for. I know each member of our staff has received the highest level of national certification as animal control professionals through our National Animal Care and Control Association. Our field services team responds to an average of around 3,000 calls annually. Their work involves rescuing strays and injured pets, reuniting lost pets with their families, investigating neglect cases, animal cruelty code violations, and numerous others, providing help support services to our community, as well as providing humane education and outreach. Our service officers work long hours, they're in dangerous situations and inclement weather, to provide a wide scope of around-the-clock services every day of the year. And they're responsible for more than just enforcing our animal laws. And I'll add that they do that countywide, which is an important piece. They're subject matter experts, and they provide services of social workers in many instances. They also work very closely with our justice system, including our prosecutors, judges, local state law enforcement agencies, elected and appointed officials, and the state veterinarian and health department, and local rabies authorities, the police and fire departments. They work with code enforcement, social services. And although they're not traditionally classified as first responders, animal control officers perform essential work that ensures public safety for humans and animals in our community. We're very proud of our animal services, field services team, and we want to recognize them for their diligent efforts and the work that they do. And let's give them a round of applause. Jeff, do you want to say anything about this group?
Yeah, I think you covered it, but they have worked tirelessly and long, hard hours. They work around the clock to take care of the animals in our city and also the people that live in our town. And of course, always go above and beyond. It's really humbling to work with such a fine, dedicated group of professionals like these three.
Well, we certainly get departmental updates routinely, and we received some of this information and thought it would be most worthy to bring you guys forward and recognize you for the work you do. And we really thank you. Appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is a proclamation. Alamance Chamber recognition of Small Business Week, May 2023. I'd like to recognize Ken Morrison, the owner of MVP Video Promotions, a Burlington small business. Please come forward. I'll read the proclamation, and then we'll have photo session here. Proclamation recognizing Small Business Week, first week of May 2023. Whereas for more than 50 years, the U.S. Small Business Administration, or SBA, has celebrated National Small Business Week, which recognizes the critical contributions of America's entrepreneurs and small business owners. And whereas Small Business Week is now observed throughout the nation, and whereas we recognize the important role that small businesses play in bringing innovation, quality of life, jobs, and investment to the city. And whereas small business owners are historically leading donors to local community through financial gifts and volunteer hours. And whereas focusing on entrepreneurial development and supporting small businesses provides for a stronger, more resilient economy. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Jim Butler, and the Burlington City Council do hereby proclaim the first week of May a Small Business Week in the city of Burlington. And furthermore, I urge all residents to recognize the value of small businesses and to support them through patronage and advocacy this 18th day of April 2023. Let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say a couple of words to the council, and thank you for making this proclamation for small business in Alamance County. We have had a business here in Alamance County since 2007, the perfect time to start a brand-new business just before a great recession. But we have been thriving and succeeding, and we've been in the city of Burlington with our business since 2018. And the success that we have is due in no small part to the community support amongst other small business owners. And especially, I want to recognize the Chamber of Commerce that does an incredible job of supporting small business in Alamance County and making all kinds of connections for all of us to succeed. I appreciate your recognition. I appreciate the chamber, and I appreciate the ongoing support of our city. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a report to City Council on the Springwood Park synthetic soccer field operations. At this time, we'll recognize Rachel Kelly, our Assistant City Manager, Administrative Services. Welcome, Rachel.
Evening. Hope you all are well. All right. Tonight, we come before you to give you a little update on the synthetic soccer field project that staff has been working with Barry Dunn on since September. We've been working with some subcontractors on that project, and we've been examining the upper tier of the soccer complex at Springwood Park. The goal was to bid one, two, or three fields as alternates. But because the designs differ so greatly between one, two, and three fields, they're not great alternates. They're better as individual projects designed specifically for one, two, or three fields. Because of that, our consultants recommended that we should choose one of those three and bid that project for the most accurate and economical bid responses. So, staff is recommending three fields for a variety of reasons. The increased availability of field use by having three weatherproof fields essentially. Making this a destination for tournaments. We've been told that three fields are a game changer for being able to host tournaments. Putting us on par with neighboring communities as far as the offerings of synthetic turf. Increased revenue potential and decreased maintenance burden. But tonight, with us is Dan Dodd from Fit Fields. He's the expert. So he can give you information on each of these options, including the designs, the costs, and the pros and cons of each. If council provides direction tonight, we feel that we'd be able to get bids back to you with a budget amendment on the 16th of May. That way, construction can take place over the summer and be ready for soccer season. So I will turn it over to Dan to go through this presentation. And if you have questions for him or staff, we're here to answer them.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Appreciate you having me here tonight to discuss Springwood Park for you. I'll give you a quick overview of who I am and what we do and kind of our work to date with staff. And we are a subconsultant firm that specializes in synthetic turf and natural grass design for athletic fields. And we are under the Barry Dunn umbrella to help develop a plan of action to look at synthetic turf options for Springwood Park. So this is a very common project in our firm. We do this all across the Carolinas and through the southeast. Landscape architect, my partner's civil engineer, and so our office kind of is, for the last 10, 11 years, has been concentrating in athletics and sports. The interesting, what we have, we have, you know, a great set of natural grass fields at Springwood Park. Okay, I'm very impressed with the quality and level of the park and the athletic fields themselves. But it doesn't have under drainage. It doesn't have some things we see in higher-end natural grass fields that help you get that playable hour and some things that will help benefit the community to have options, right? So a lot of communities come to us when they want to ask about synthetic turf, if it's right for them. And really, a common thread is that you need a little bit of both in your community to satisfy your recreation programs. So we're looking at the three northern fields, the closest fields towards the restroom building on the site. And we did an analysis and preliminary design of what that would look like. And I'm going to show you some examples of a three-field complex, a two-field complex, and a one-field complex. What we can, this is about 208,000 square feet with three full-size soccer fields. But the value in three fields, full size, is really a lot of the small-sided soccer will go east to west. If you look north to south, there's a lot of spaghetti lines on here. But generally, the platform itself can provide up to six U-12 soccer games at one time. So it's very similar to how recreation runs the fields today. Multiple age groups, multiple flexibility. But we're going to put this on synthetic turf and permanently inlay it, the lines, so we won't have to paint or chalk. And then it creates a platform that can handle heavy rains. It drains very quickly, and it really ups your program hours. So the three-field complex is really the most economical in terms of construction, in general construction of turf fields. The interesting thing in this project, not to get too specific and detailed, we are changing the crown elevation of the field to line more appropriately with the orientation of the large soccer fields. So it's just not as simple as putting a field on top of grass. There's excavation, there's draining, drainage. And then we redesigned the grades to be minimal, because if you're doing synthetic turf, you don't need a large crown. So if you would go to football games, you know, and you see a large crown, and you can't see somebody's knee on the other side, that was done to promote drainage. So the higher slope on your field, the faster the water could go off natural grass. But with synthetic turf, we have the option to make it almost flat, because we're taking the rainwater through the system and through a series of drainage pipes. So the constructability of three fields is very economical in a bid setting, but it also is, as Rachel was saying, a very key component to attracting tournaments. So you would actually have availability to run continuous games here at a high volume without wear and tear on your natural grass fields. This is a little bit of a enlargement to show you the variety. We've been working with staff to kind of figure out the magic formula of what we call the sizes of the fields and how they want to play with them, that is going to be customized to their program. So it's a lot of input from staff to help generate this. This is our first revision, our first addition of kind of what the lines would look like. So you can see there's a variety of bitty fields in the program, going up to your U-12s in the yellow, and then your full-size, three full-size fields that would be, you know, high school regulation play. So it's a very multifunctional and attractive environment when you're looking at out of, you know, regional tournament attractions. The other option would be working on two fields only. And then just quickly, in this scheme, you can see the two synthetic fields being proposed to plan east, and that would leave the western field exposed. But we would have to regrade that western field. We'd have to re-sod it. There'd be construction traffic and staging on the western, the grass field. So there is some expense to go back and repair it to build just two fields. And so we have a full estimate. It's very detailed, you know, down to the ton of gravel. In this council presentation, we're just going to give you the lump-sum numbers, but it is backed up with unit costs. So if you need more information, we have all the details that we can present to you. So, and the other thing, two gets to be about a pretty good project for the group of contractors that we are looking at to bid on this. They're very specialized. Three fields is a high attractor for the competitive bidding process, right? It's a bigger project. There's two major synthetic turf construction firms within 60 miles of here. They'd be competitively bidding the project. There are five total. But local North Carolina projects keep their, you know, employees at home for the night. It's a very big deal in the industry. They travel regionally from Florida to Pennsylvania building fields. So getting opportunities in the Carolinas gets a lot of notice. And again, this is a competitively bid project. And then the last option would be one field only, and we recommend it would be the center field, because we can correct the grading issue out there and re-crown the field correctly on the center field. And there would be repairs to both the east and west side. But the field would drop in category. It would drop in interest. It'd be similar to a high school grass renovation of a stadium to turf field. We'd still get quality bidders, but a little less aggressively, right? Because it's a smaller-scale project. And just to kind of jump, and I'm not going to spend too much time, and I'm here for any questions you have, to get as detailed as you need me to be. This is kind of the economy scale. Again, this is backed up with unit costs that we provided to the city. The recommendation for three fields for flexibility value and scale was at $3.6 million. Synthetic turf fields are not cheap. Neither are really good natural grass fields. It's a misconception that you can just, natural grass fields are inexpensive. We do it all the time. Generally, if you do it right, they're $600,000, $700,000 a field if they correctly are designed, correctly with full drainage systems. The reason we're here tonight, and Rachel kind of stated this, I work with staff. We do like alternates in a bid, but general contractors in our industry bidding synthetic turf fields just can't get their head around a one-field, two-field, or three-field alternate. It's too wide of a spread. It creates bonding issues, bid issues, estimating issues. How do I buy, how do I put the bid bond in if the alternate's a $2 million swing? You know, you get, you get all these kind of detailed questions that come out through the contracting process. Within our design, we have major alternatives or alternates to consider in the bid that can help protect against the budget. But we're here today to hopefully kind of get some understanding from council, mayor, what level are you looking for? So we can really design the project to be most economical and give our bidders a chance to just concentrate on what ultimately you would like to have out at Springwood Park. We want to get this thing started in June. We really want to get on the radar here of our bidding contractors so we can get bids in and get this thing rolling. It's a 60-to-90-day process, and we're looking at an October 1 finish date. Building fields in the summer is a lot more, many advantages for the weather. It dries out quicker when you're ripping up dirt and subgrade and trucking in gravel. We can build in late fall, but it's often delayed because of delays in the weather. So our goal would be to get this ready for that fall season in 2023. But out of all the technical and the construction size, we have three different budgets. You saw them. They're clearly 3.6, 2.6, and 1.5. These are the five kind of takeaways, what I call positive outcomes of the project. We would increase this field, Springwood Park soccer use dramatically. The availability of field program hours is plus or minus 40% increase. You're not taking fields offline due to weather, wet weather, wear and tear. Y'all are playing on Bermuda grass that hasn't even turned green yet. You know, it's hard for a turf manager to manage that level of play in the very beginning stages of greenup for hybrid Bermuda turf fields. Staff does a tremendous job. I can't say that enough from what I've seen out there. The all-weather play and less cancellations. And we also have a little reduction in turf maintenance. We don't have to line the fields every day. We're not irrigating them. You know, it's tremendous water resources to irrigate natural grass fields. Fertilizing requirements go down. It's instant play. It's right after a rain event. I was on a field in the 20, we had a 24-hour rain a couple of days, a couple of weeks ago. It's a pretty sizable event. And I went to my local field just to check out the drainage characteristics. It was playable during the rain event the whole time. So there are high-speed drainages, and they really increase your field usage. Number four is an interesting one that we always want, pure city benchmarking. What are other communities doing? We work for everybody all around the Carolinas. We see high and tremendous interest in synthetic turf. We are also very pro-natural grass. But we want, as you grow, you want a little bit of both to manage your program expectations, right? You have a lot of positive growth in athletics, active lifestyle, and branding of tournaments or regional identification of offering that to your community. And then there is revenue potential in tournaments, of course. We just finished a job. Ripken is a baseball provider, and they have Myrtle Beach. We just finished some fields for them in Pigeon Forge. The average team, it's not what your market is, but for their market, it's a $4,000 fee to play in a tournament on a Ripken field. I mean, it's, just think of that. It's 50 teams on the weekend. That's pretty decent money. Community and municipal is much lower, you know, and I guess, you know, you're not Myrtle Beach or Pigeon Forge. You just have that attraction, that vacation element. But it wouldn't be uncommon to have $800,000 a team on a tournament for a weekend. And it really gives opportunity for local businesses to advertising opportunities like that, kind of being more involved in something that's out there and be involved with the sport tourism industry if you decided to get into that part of the offerings for recreation. So I think, oh, I'm sorry about that. That's all I had, Rachel, or mayor and council. I am here for questions, technical, and staff is also here to support us and anything that you may have to make for us.
One-off, this field, there's obviously those slopes, there's an upper segment and an lower segment. In terms of drainage at this size area, where would the drainage go? How would it impact the natural field for the long?
Yes, very good questions. Full drainage plans have been designed, and I'm going to go to the three-field design here. It is going to be used for tying in, I'm going to point to this real quick. There's a series of catch basins, as you guys know, between the restroom and the platform. Each field will have an individual drainage system that ties back to catch basin one, catch basin two, and then we have the outfall that goes here, the catch basin three. So you're coordinating with stormwater staff, and due to the time of concentration through the infiltration of the water, it will actually use the existing system today. And so what that does, it outfalls away from the fields, it should not, well, it actually will reduce any potential runoff to the lower field, because right now this field is crowned north to south, and you have sheet flow coming off over the large sledding hill, because you get snow, that's a good place to sled, down to the lower platform. We're changing that where the high point is through the middle, and we go east to west, but synthetic turf is designed, the water goes completely through the system to the stone, to a series of pipes, perforated pipes, very similar to a French drain. If you put those in your garden near your house, a pipe wrapped in gravel, and then the pressure will take it to the catch basin, so you have full stormwater outfall. So we should actually see an improvement to the waterfall, if you are being impacted today to the lower fields.
Would the water on the west side then, would that go to the, to the catch basin already in play, or will that go to?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's height, it's really, so the other thing, we're really into the weeds, but there's a lot of electric power lines, so we designed the drainage system, so we wouldn't get a crossover with your existing light power. We're trying to not have, not into relocations. But we start a half percent go this way and around, and raising is, we're building up, we're not building down. Those catch basins coming down the hill, they actually, they go up a foot and a half, and then we back to the, so we have less of a kind of dip between the fields and the hillside. So this is coming up about 12 to 14 inches, the catch basins will raise up. But the catch basins don't have to do the duty that they were doing for majority of the drainage area, because it goes away. They'll still take the water from the restroom hillside down the hill to the open catch basins, but remember, all of this now is going through and getting caught with pipes, so it'll be less runoff to the catch basin. We have the plans, and we can share them with you, and certainly I can show you all the drainage routing, when we get that underway. It will go for road control permanently, so we have permitting timelines that are really important for the project to have a chance to open up and that are involved.
So when we were originally looking at this project, I guess it was probably July of last year, what, it seems to me like we were banner-ing around a couple million dollars, 1.8, 2 million, is that right? In our thought process?
Yes.
And that was, how many fields, two?
Two.
Of course, you know, we've got to get the bids in, no, we don't. I mean, I think for, at least from my perspective, on looking at the entire scope of the project and some of the other residual benefits from it, it seems to me that they should be the all three fields.
I would agree. I'd make that recommendation, if you need a recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
So at this point, what is staff looking for? Just some guidance on how to move forward, or?
I think exactly that, what number of fields are you interested in seeing bids for? Because at that point, Dan would finish his work, put the bids out, we'd have that out for a number of weeks, and that way we could bring them back to you to award the bids if you so choose, and to pass a budget amendment again if you so choose to move forward with constructing those three fields.
And would it be, this might be getting a little ahead of things, but would our plans, if we go to a three-phase program, like, three-field program like this, would we be looking at tournament program?
I would have to defer to Tony on exactly programming, but the first priority in designing these were to accommodate Burlington Parks and Rec Soccer, to make sure that we could accommodate the 800-plus youth that are playing in our system now. Staff has also reached out to the soccer club and folks that come in and rent fields and use fields to make sure that we understood their needs and how we could accommodate those with the lines as well. And then, of course, we're used to hosting a couple of tournaments a year, but with the ability to play and not worry about field damage or weather on three fields, I think we have a tremendous opportunity to bring additional tournaments in.
It really opens up the summer season, too, which has been really off-limits, though, because that's the natural growing time for the Bermuda grass that Dan talked about. You can't play on it while it's in the growth season, so that's June, July, and August. So with the artificial turf, we can host a lot of events in the summertime, and there are a lot of soccer events that happen there in those three months that would increase our use, 12 months of the year for these fields, where it's been mostly eight to nine months.
A competitive advantage, if you will, if others are having to let their fields grow during that time, and we have three available for play.
I would imagine this is the way out, also, it would be, could be useful across, could it not?
It could be, if you so choose, sure.
I have a couple of questions. What's the, what is the life of synthetic fields?
Very good question. So the warranty, the standard warranty, which is not the life, is an eight-year warranty that we procure in the bid process. Our experience for our fields that we have designed, we generally see around year 10, that you want to start thinking about procuring the new resurfacing or the new surface, you don't have to build the whole field again. But it's not uncommon to get 10 to 12 years on a field. Some of our heavier uses in wear spots really come from different sports, lacrosse is one of our tough spots on the crease, baseball on the pitcher's mound. So year eight is your warranty. We did take staff on a field trip to a brand-new field in what I call the busiest turf field in North Carolina, and that was at year eight, and it was still functioning really well, because they wanted to see what something new looked like and what something that was eight years. And the field we went to was outside the Carmichael Arena that we designed, which is basically the free-for-all park for UNC students right near Durham Stadium. And so this thing is.
Right next to a school of government, if you're familiar with the field.
Yeah, it's right there, but across from the cemetery. And it is 16 hours of use a day since we dropped it. So Casey was there, everybody was there, it was still functioning in turf at year eight, it's going out of warranty at year eight. We won't get a call back to put new turf down, reexide it probably for another two years on that turf. I have not seen one fail under eight years. If you do have a failure, it's going to be a manufacturer effect on the fiber or something that came along. But the level of quality of fields that the vendors are providing are outstanding these days. Five major vendors that we generally fit to specialize, and it is a series of steps that only qualified contractors can build. One other thing, if we, every new high school we work on, generally every new park has synthetic built into it from the beginning. So there's not a new high school that really gets built, the North Carolina, that doesn't have synthetic in their stadiums from day one. And we have some large sport complexes that have both, a lot of natural grass and synthetic. So I think communities are fine, and they just need some synthetic fields. We're not doing all of them, very expensive, but some that take that rain use, and have a really enough playability that you can practice on, not have some rain outs, and keep the programs on schedule.
The other thing I thought I understood you to say is that asking for bids on three alternatives was not as competitive, is that what I understood?
On field one, two, and three scenario, yeah, that's pretty unheard of in our industry. I don't think people will even take time to bid the project to a degree of complexity. It's a very good market for work. So if you can imagine, that would be three different sets of design plans, fully designed, and three drastically different numbers, where most of our alternates in, we do a lot of universities, so in state construction office, in state construction companies, we're advised not to have high-dollar alternates because of major changes. And really, your alternates should be built into your budget that's accepted, or, you know, fringe items, maybe some wish lists within the set budget, because it is very difficult to do pricing exercise in a short period of time to get us on schedule. And on bid day, and I was, you know, we do this all the time, my numbers are very good, and we're going to be right there, so the numbers aren't, you're not going to get a three-field complex for two, you know, you know what I mean? Like, it's unit cost out to the T. You will see those swings in that today on bid day, too.
The question that I ask is that I'm struggling with the cost of this. I don't know where the money's coming from for this, and it seems to me that doing one is a good idea, but I am not sure that I'm convinced that doing $4 million for this is, is the right thing for us to be doing right now.
But with that being said, maybe I missed something here. Going forward, how do you bid this then? Or how do you, how do you bring information back to us? There are going to be some, some changes there, if you only do one or two fields, let's be frank here, send it back, the adjacent field.
Yeah, no, no, and we have estimated all that. And so you get speed and effect, the number, the delta, and how do I put this, like, totally understand, as your financial, you understand that completely. That's not changing on bid day. Those numbers, they're not really changing. There'll be a variation of that through the vendors, but at the end of the day, can you afford, why bid 3.6 when you only have 1.8? You can't even, like, that's not going to go that far south that it will fit your budget or your pocketbook. So we're trying to get a good understanding of what the budget is, so we can efficiently design it, bid it correctly with the least amount of questions, the least amount of confusion, the least chance for protest. I mean, when you, when you have million-dollar alternates, it's not really a good look.
I can, in a?
Because they're, they don't even know if the project's real, and I can put two crews out here at 3.6 and set them up on hotel stage or whatever, and I can plan my summer out accordingly to the project that's being presented to us, but they swing that drastically. The companies just would have, that's a, we might not want it at 1.5, we have other things to do. We really like it at 3.6, because it's an economy of scale that can fit our timeline in the construction policy. And one reason I've explained this to you, I've just, I've seen this before, and I kind of can predict this outcome for you. I'm happy to do it, but I think we would be back here with the same decision that we're trying to kind of have you guys talk about ahead of time. And then we can design specifically to that budget. So the power of it, for us, since we do this all the time, if all you had was two, I got to figure out how to get you as much as I can for two. It's a different design perspective, as opposed to wishful thinking beyond, like, you know, that it's not coming in. And the summers are peak period, like I said, it's a limited pool of contractors, we're building fields all over, high schools, colleges, constantly. Could a, could a one field come in higher because of lack of bidding interest? Possible. You know, it just changes that game continuously. And so I do know, it's much more effective to have your, a budget range today to inform us to maximize the value through the design process to the bid number that we have to, that file and bring. But you see what I'm saying on that? I don't know if I'm answering your questions.
So Peggy, how would we, what would be our financial vehicle for this? Fund balance or installment?
You could use, you could use fund balance, we're probably not picking up some of y'all.
You could use fund balance, you could choose to, we could issue a reimbursement resolution where we could go out for financing for, for this over, I believe, 10 years was the optimal time period for the soccer fields. There is also the aspect of thinking about funds that we use to reimburse our public safety salaries. You could make a decision to use some of those monies as well.
I think we've already sort of committed.
You have, you have, but you have the option to, if you would like, that's just another option.
So if we're, if we're looking at the reimbursement resolution, then we're really talking about cash flow, not cash outlay. We're talking about something that we can budget routinely.
That is, that is true. We are looking at, in our budget for the coming year, we are looking at a larger borrowing due to the capital needs that we have, so we would want to make sure we can stay under the $10 million bank qualified. Bank qualified causes a little bit of a higher interest rate as well.
And with $3.6 million, suppose over that $10 million?
We would be close, and we could just choose to, we could choose to use fund balance so that, to make sure that we stay under.
Yeah.
Because we still have other capital recreation projects that we need to, you know, consider as well, as part of the borrowing as well.
I think this, you know, this was a difficult construction project in the beginning, a lot of grading, and maybe not sometimes the best soils. But I think what we have to, as a council, consider is there's a number of options on the table of other projects that's being considered, and would this one serve more people and may be of greater benefit in terms of our number of citizens than some of the other ones would? And I think it very well may. You know, we have a really nice first-class soccer tennis complex, obviously we need pickleball courts. But I think we have to make some decisions about where money would flow to, to stay within our means, so we bear to everybody. I think it would be interesting to hear of my school system, and our private school system, what they're willing to do with this. Because I'm sure they're going to, they're going to want to play on, whether it's going to be a rental fee, or what, you know, I'm not saying, certainly not going to reimburse this thing to build $3.6 million, but you know, there's going to be activity, and just being experienced in this field, there's going to be a number of requests, confident to utilize these facilities. So planning, obviously, we, we're looking at our recreation and parks plan that's coming to us maybe within the next 60 days. Not having seen what some of the specific needs are and some of our growth areas are, I just know from just common sense interaction that there's just an exploding growth for recreational facilities, and certainly in that area, it, it would, to me, is more devastating to spend money and not finish it, where it's, we got to go back later, and, all right, how do you go back and add to it, because we didn't quite get there? If we can figure out a way, if it fits all the, if it checks all the boxes, and we can use a reimbursement process to fund this along with the other projects that we have, because we're not going to get any smaller.
Soccer's not going away. Did we do a study in reference to the amount of dollars that may be coming in due to tournament play or anything like that?
Well, unfortunately, we can't, we don't have a hotel motel tax, which is something that this council needs to continue to push forward. which is something that this council needs to continue to push forward, for our community. That's the way you can keep up with what your revenues are. I mean, you'll have people coming in for this from outside of the bench that's going to, this is a day or two, there'll be motel use, there'll be food use, you know, there's a lot of that. Unfortunately, we just don't right now, but not having a system in place, which has to go through the county, county side, if I understand it correctly, and if I'm right.
That's right. Every bit of, we.
Yeah, that, I mean, we're, we're missing that, and that's a, just a, something that, with investments like this, it's really important to have that type of formula, and you can go across the state, and most counties have that now.
We'd be limited to the rental fees that came back in, and then, of course, the economy would see the, the growth, but that would not be realized by the city due to lack of occupancy tax.
Let me add one other thing, too. We already have the school use, we already have the travel team use with our Burlington Soccer Club. We already have our program, which uses it a lot. We, we have 1,500, 2,000 kids playing out there in the fall and, and spring seasons. So, it's a lot of play on these natural turf fields. The artificial turf is going to produce more play and more revenue. Can't give you dollars and cents right now, but, you know, we can develop something like that in the future. But it's going to open up a lot more than that. The schools, we already have schools. We have public schools, the Alamance Borough School System, we have charter schools, we have private schools already using our fields. And, you know, some of these schools wouldn't have soccer teams if they didn't use our facility. And, and we don't want to eliminate that from them to cause them not to be able to play. So, we can look at some reasonable fees, you know, to charge people to use this new turf. Certainly, we're not going to generate 4 million dollars in a short time, but over, over time, we could help pay a lot of the expense of putting it in.
Well, the advantages of doing it, this park is, are significant in the sense that you get parking capacity.
Yeah, that's one thing, we do analysis, what you're asking for, is I would do that. The one driver is land development costs. And so, let's say your park might produce this.
Park might produces a recommendation for a new sport complex. Well, that, that, that's a land development raw cost that has to be generated with restrooms, parking, lighting, the whole, so, a renovation to synthetics is, is an evolution to support the program increase of activity, without additional land development costs to a new facility. And I think as you grow and you look for your new facility, or that may be in your future, that synthetics will be definitely part of the conversation from day one. So, we're on a team in Lee County, I think our 45 million dollar project right now, it's a combination of grass and synthetic. So you, you, you know, regional sport projects are 30, 40, 50 million dollars to do a park like Springwood today. And so there's a lot of, I would say, economies of retrofitting or renovating to the extra hours that you can generate.
So what's the thoughts on giving staff some guidance? We've heard several for three, one with some trepidation.
I'm still on three.
Well, I just think, if, if we go three, then we recognize what the cost is going to be, and then we're, we're looking at the budget this year, and it's stuff that's coming up, and, and we're going to have to address it in the budget. And that, you know.
Well, in the beginning, we talked about fund balance, and we also talked about borrowing money. That's, when we started this conversation way back, those are the two issues, our two ways that we were going to fund the projects. And it was a matter of one or two at that point in time. Staff has recommended three, so I said we move forward. I don't think staff would recommend if they didn't think we could pay for it.
I'm good with three. To, obviously, we're giving staff guidance to get some bids put in. There's, there's a whole nother side to project funding, and this is just a piece of it.
Yeah, we would come back before the board on the second meeting in May to talk about budget amendment to board contracts. So of course, you've got some, this coming back, and you're making the decision to fund construction.
I think if you ever got to do it, it's probably cheaper to do it in the beginning than his ad come back and add his third or later on. But that's, I mean.
No, I, our, our costs continue to increase across pretty much everything we see construction these days. Thank you so much.
Well, I appreciate the discussion.
I, I think we need to, I think we need to look at three, and I think we need to look at some financing, you know, as part of what we're talking about. Because if we, if we do this, and we do the other recreational projects that's been proposed, that's going to be a pretty big hit. I think we need to sort of combine those, look at some kind of long-term financing. But I do think we needed to do this now because certainly, the economy of the scales, you know, and it's not going to get any cheaper, and there's going to be a lot of redo and go back and add, so that's where I am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great presentation, and good, good dialogue.
Thank you. Appreciate being here tonight.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, the next item on our agenda is Code of Ethics disclosing any potential conflicts of interest. At this time, we'll call on City Clerk Everly Smith.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask that there is no such conflict, and that is my decision.
No. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone on council has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A is to approve the restructuring of two part-time maintenance worker, two positions in the solid waste department, and consolidating these into one full-time maintenance worker, two position, Level 16, effective in the next pay cycle. Item B is to authorize the City of Burlington to retain Stout, Stewart, McGowan, and King LLP for their services in the fiscal year 2022-2023 annual audit, and to authorize the mayor and director of finance and risk management to execute the contracts. Item C is to adopt a resolution for fiscal year 2024 authorizing the transit manager to submit grant applications for federal and state funding in response to NC DOT's calls for project. Item D is to approve revised guidelines for economic development incentives and priority corridor grant program application process as proposed by the Economic Development Department. Item E to adopt a resolution for the City of Burlington to apply for a clean water revolving loan funding for Dry Creek Lift Station improvements. Item F is to approve a lease agreement between the City of Burlington and Loomis Fiber, and approve associated budget amendment 2023-33 to procure the necessary equipment to set up the remote hot site location. And item G is to approve budget amendment 2023-34 for an economic development project at the Burlington-Alamance Airport Authority pursuant to LabCorp Aviation Center Expansion Project. At this time, we'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
We'll move.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Thank you. Next item will enter into our public hearings this evening. We have numerous public hearings, so we will have, we will recognize the open floor for public comments for all of these. Item one is a public hearing. It's been scheduled to consider an application to rezone properties from medium-density residential, MDR, and high-density residential, HDR, to high-density residential, limited use, HDRLU. The properties are located north from the intersection of Sharp Road and Lakeside Avenue on the easterly side of Lakeside Avenue, and the terminus of Elva Drive, addressed as 1071 Lakeside Avenue, 1107 Lakeside Avenue, and 0 Elva Drive, consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Numbers 128, 181, 128, 187, 128, 212, and 139, 955. At this time, we'll recognize our planning director, Jamie Lawson.
Good evening. Okay, the applicant is here, so I don't want to speak for him specifically, but we did receive correspondence that the applicant has made a request for this item to be continued to your June 20th meeting. And Mr. Moffett is here, in case you have any questions for him.
I'm inclined to move we continue it to June the 20th.
So we have a motion to move this item. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that one will be continuing. Thank you. Item two. A public hearing has been scheduled to consider an application to rezone properties from general business, GB, to high-density residential, limited use, HDRLU. The properties are located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Ponco Street and Bowman Avenue, on the northerly side of Bowman Avenue, addressed as 1320 Bowman Avenue and 1340 Bowman Avenue, consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Numbers 139, 112, and 139, 118. At this time, we'll recognize Jamie once again.
Okay, good evening again. So this item was presented to you at your April 3rd, 2023 work session. This is, again, a request to rezone the properties. They are currently general business, shown here on the zoning map, and the request is to go to high-density residential with a limited use. The limited use is for single-family detached only. The future land use designation for this area is traditional residential. Staff does find that the request for the rezoning is consistent with that, and we are recommending the rezoning consistent with option number one in your consistency statement sheet. I believe the owner, Sean Brown, there he is, over there, is present, in case you have any questions specifically for him.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any specific questions for Jamie or Mr. Brown on item two? Okay, this is a public hearing. So at this point in time, we will have an open floor for public comments. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on item two in public comments? Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak on item two? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions or comments on item two? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the request to rezone properties from general business, GB, to high-density residential, limited use, HDR-LU. The properties are located in the northeastern corner and intersection of Ponco Street and Bowman Avenue, on the northerly side of Bowman Avenue, addressed as 1320 Bowman Avenue and 1340 Bowman Avenue, consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Numbers 139, 112, and 139, 118. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in Section 4 Land Use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to have traditional residential uses. The request is compatible with the adjacent residential uses. The action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential uses in this area, and the request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Thank you. We have a motion on item number two. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number two is approved. Thank you, Mr. Brown, for being here. Item number three. A public hearing has been scheduled to consider a request to amend the conditional business, CB 901A zoning district, to allow for the use of schools, academic, nurseries, kindergartens, elementary, secondary, public or private. City of Burlington zoning ordinance, Section 32.9. The property is the Holly Hill Mall and Business Center, located southeast from the intersection of South Church Street and Huffman Mill Road, addressed as 309 Huffman Mill Road, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 113749. At this time, we'll recognize Jamie once again.
Good evening. So, this also was presented to you at your April 3rd work session, and it is a request to amend the conditional business rezoning to allow schools. The current zoning stipulates all uses within the B2 zoning district. Schools are not permitted there. However, as discussed during the work session, if this property was zoned, GB or general business, schools would be permitted within that. So, staff is recommending this request as well, as it is consistent with the future land use designation of the areas being regional commercial, and option number one within your consistency statement sheet. There is a representative from Holly Hill Mall here, a Ms...
Terry Jones.
Terry Jones. Yep. Thank you. In case you have any questions for her, and of course, I'm able to answer any questions that you might have.
And just as a reflection of our work session, if, if this was, say, community college classes, it could, would be allowed?
Mm-hmm.
Under current?
That's right.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, that we discussed. Any questions for Jamie on this item?
No, just, the word on the street is that we're considering rezoning the entire Holly Hill Mall for a school. So, just so you know that there's misinformation out there about this.
Well, the, the zoning would apply to that entire property. So the uses, you know, dictate not just one section of the mall, it would be this entire area that's highlighted in, in that shade.
It's just an addition to the current conditional.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not, we're not changing anything else related to that previously approved conditional rezoning, except for, which had a number of conditions, signage, and parcels, and, and other types of uses. This is just allowing an additional use that wasn't anticipated at that time.
What was the number that we discussed? Was it like 25 students?
Right, right. It was, it was definitely under 25, I would say.
You have questions? This is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open up the floor for any public comments on item number three. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on item number three on the agenda? Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on item number three? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. At this time, if there are no other questions or comments, we'll entertain a motion on item number three.
I make a motion to approve the request to amend the conditional business, CB 901A zoning district, to allow for the use of schools, academic, nurseries, kindergartens, elementary, secondary, public or private, City of Burlington zoning ordinance, Section 32.9. The property is the Holly Hill Mall and Business Center, located southeast from the intersection of South Church Street and Huffman Mill Road, addressed as 309 Huffman Mill Road, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 113749. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan, in that the future land use map in Section 4 Land Use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to have regional commercial uses. The request is compatible with the adjacent commercial uses. This action is reasonable and in the public interest, in that the comprehensive plan calls for a variety of uses, including commercial and institutional uses in the area. The request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval on item number three. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number three is approved. Thank you, Terry. Moving to item number four. A public hearing has been scheduled to consider a voluntary annexation petition to annex into the City of Burlington a portion of a parcel of land, which is continuous to current city limits, addressed as 1136 Cedar Crest Drive, located on the northwest side of Hanford Road. The property is 7.639 acres in size and consists of... of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 113546. We'll recognize Jamie once again.
Okay, so this is a public hearing request for this parcel of land that's shown here in yellow shade. It is adjacent to the existing Alamance Food Warehouse that it is to the northwest. The applicant is, is going to be expanding their warehouse and operation and are requesting to have this property included in the city limits in order to accommodate additional utilities and services to the site. So staff is recommending the annexation. You have an ordinance included in your packet for tonight, and the applicant, Hannah Kavart, is also present in case you have any questions for her or for me.
Okay, any questions on item number four for Jamie or for the petitioner, Hannah? Okay, item number four. This is a public hearing, so at this time, we will open the floor for any public comments. I'll ask if anyone on this side of the room would like to speak on item number four. Would anyone on this room, like, this side of the room, like to speak on item number four? Hearing now, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, if there's any other questions or conversation, we'll entertain a motion on item number four.
I move that we adopt the annexation ordinance for the contiguous voluntary annexation of a parcel located at 1136 Cedar Crest Drive, effective at midnight on April 18th, 2023.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So item number four is approved. Thank you for being here. At this time, we will, and thank you, Jamie, for all of that information. At this time, we'll move into our public comments period. Public comments are for topics not on the agenda. We do limit public comments to five minutes per speaker. At this time, we have Carl Buckland of 913 Old Glenco Road, Burlington, North Carolina, 27214, to speak about water and sewer policy and annexations. Welcome, Mr. Buckland.
Thank you. I apologize for my cell phone. I thought it was off when I came into the building.
But. I. It was only a suggestion.
Well, it was unintentional. This is more of a request than a comment. Last summer, a company out of South Dakota approached me about renting some space that I have out on West Old Glenco Road to store. They had a contract with Duke Power to replace a lot of poles and stuff and upgrade the electrical system in our area. I think if you might have, about four weeks ago, the Alamance News did an article. They had the front page of, well, you know, about all the utility trucks in our area. What's going on there is, well, when they came there and rented, you know, they were aware that we didn't have water and we, but, you know, the people come there, they park their trucks, their private vehicles, they get in their trucks and they go out and they work on the grid system for Duke Power. Hopefully, this was a one-year contract to lease it. We've talked about extending it. We're hoping it'll go on further. We've had problems last winter. Their portable storage tanks froze and burst. And this has been, so what I'm asking you today is to expedite the water and sewer connections. I've been in contact with staff. The petition for voluntary annexation of this property is continuous. Actually, it's in between the satellite annexation there. I'd like you to treat it as two subjects instead of one. Jamie has the paperwork for me ready to sign for the voluntary annexation. The water lines are there. They were done in 1995 by the county. The city never paid for these water lines. They were put in by the county for an industrial development grant. And that's the line that I will be taking, tapping into, would want to tap into. The sewer line that I will want to tap into, I gave the City of Burlington, I gave it to the public right away for the sewer line. So these things, you know, I've had a finger in for 20-some years. So I'm asking your help to expedite, do the, ask for approval for the water and sewer tap to proceed. Jamie suggested that this needed to be helped over until May to your work session. And a lot of the delay in me getting this done is due to my own illnesses that I've had. So I'm asking your help to get this expedited, get the water and sewer for these people. There's about 50 people working out of this site. And a lot of them, I see license plates from Texas and Indiana and all over. So they're staying in motels. It's in the public interest. It's, they're contributing to the economy, and I think it's in the public interest to help these people because if we ever have a tornado, we'll be landit to our neighbor. They can help get power back on and get it up and working. So what I'd like to ask you to do tonight is to expedite this and get this done. One of the other things that I'd like, and I've been involved for 35 years, West Old Glenco Road, my friends tease me and call me the mayor of Glenco Road, but it, for years, for 30-some years, you've been collecting double water sewer fees. In that 30-some years, my rough calculations is going to be between $2 and $3 million that you've taken from the community in double fees. I would like to ask you to consider putting some of that money back into the community. I don't need the water and sewer service. Where I live, my well, I have a good well, but there are people out there that has problems. I know some people's got six and 800 feet wells and have problems. I was very fortunate. I've got a 100-foot well and I get 40 gallons a minute. But the issue here tonight is let's take care of brick constructors so that they may, if we have a problem, they can take care of us. Thank you.
Thank you. David, I think from a ordinance perspective, could you work with Jamie and Mr. Buckland and see where we're at on that request?
Later.
Okay. All right, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Buckland. At this time, we'll enter into the city council comments. We do have a couple. I would like to recognize it is Rachel Kelly's birthday week. She doesn't have just a birthday. She has a birthday week. So congratulations. I wouldn't even go there. Gosh, what a, I think it'd be in common together. I know. There's a, there's a lot of resemblance. It must be the Zodiac. Yes. The other thing I would like to mention is to give a special thank you to Chief Long, who was the emcee of the Celebration of Life that was held at Lamb's Chapel today. Celebration of Life is a statewide event for the fallen officers throughout our state in late 2021 and all of 2022. And I think it was a pretty phenomenal event, and it was nice to have Chief emcee that. And you did a great job representing Burlington as the host city. We appreciate that, Chief. Thank you. The other item I'd like to mention is today is line workers appreciation day. We received an email from Duke Energy and just asked that we would share the information of their desire to recognize our line workers throughout the utility industry that really work hard to keep us up and going in any special events. And I wanted to be sure everybody was made aware of that. And then the other thing I'd like to mention, just for community knowledge, we received an update on our policing summary. And effectively, we've got 145 sworn positions, 106 are deployable. We have 29 that are in training or cadets. So effectively, that brings us to a shortage of 10 officers. So that's phenomenal work on behalf of Burlington PD. And I know we've had 12 laterals. We just had a couple of laterals sworn in recently. So it's obvious that the value of our department and our community is seen in the law enforcement industry, and we're starting to get back to a position that a lot of municipalities be envious of. I just heard today that Charlotte is down 300 officers. I know Winston-Salem is down 140. And those are just a couple of numbers that I heard mentioned today at the ceremony. So, you know, on the path that we're on, by summertime, we could be at a fully staffed level, which in the state of North Carolina of the country is really unheard of. So that's a group effort. That is city staff getting behind the initiatives. That's the city manager and our police department leadership team and council for really trying to be a visionary and step out beyond what was creating the problem. And it's obvious that it's worked. So thanks to everybody involved. And like I said today, we love all of our officers, and that's a pretty important thing. Any other council comments? If I could, I'm going to go ahead and start from.
Well, we just, Duke Power, this is about recognizing the linemen. That's what we have out there. And, you know, they are linemen that you appreciate having out there, but it seems like you don't have enough appreciation to give them water.
I think we're going to try to work with you on that, Mr. Buckland.
Can you? But that's two weeks. In two weeks' time, I could, we could, it's possible to have the water on and flowing.
Mr. Buckland, we're going to work with you on that. Our public comments section is over. I think our city attorney is going to work with our planning department on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other council comments? Just one comment. Staff, what a great job, West Davis. West Davis Street looked after your baby. But always as a remedy to this, like this afternoon, I had two calls from two ladies who were very upset because they couldn't figure out why there was a bicycle signature put on the middle of the street. And their thoughts were, wasn't bicycle lane supposed to be on the side of the street? So I've given our engineer's name out to these ladies, so just want to let you know. Maybe my phone call, did I give you a home number or your cell number? But then maybe that phone call tomorrow. But really, seriously, the street looks great, which I've done. It is just. Any other council comments?
No.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
If I move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.